Up to, right?
Yeah.
Right? Not to exceed.
Eight fifty-one, we're-
We're not back, we're not like, we're not-
Hello, 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 hello?
Here we are. Testing.
Eight fifty-one, we're back in regular session. Item number twenty, discussion on action on claim made by Carlos Trejo for damage to his property.
Make a motion to approve the claim up to an amount of four hundred dollars with our staff looking into proof of the phone. While with the bill that says the name.
If I put the motion in, it permits that determine the idea of the cost of-
Mark it.
...
Okay.
Second.
Will we have a speaker, Mr. Trejo?
Thank you for that motion and, um, I just want to point out the few points that I didn't point out earlier. It's not just about the money here, it's not, it really isn't. When we first discussed it, I told them, I don't know, because these phones, the phone I got now was given to me from my cousin. That's from a sister-in-law. Had no clue it was a nine-hundred-some-dollar phone. It's not about the money and I appreciate that motion. It's about checks and balances. Who holds the police accountable? I was also told that this is one of the few times that it happens. Well, it happens. I'm very good example, this happens. What are we gonna do now to prevent it from happening again? Or does everybody that gets their property lost or not have to go through this? Because this process has been, like, not easy. It's, it's been a lengthy process. I'm, I'm, I'm disabled, I mean, I got, I'm a single father. I got my daughter out here at nine on school night. Because it's important, that's why. And it's not just the money is important, it is, I'm not gonna lie, it's important too, but what are we gonna do from here on? I don't want ten more people coming back before, after me, having to go through the same process. What kind of policies, what kind of procedures are these officers trained well enough? You know, all kinds of questions come up. And I want to make sure that, thank you for giving me your time and you all address all those for the future. That's all I got to say.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Ms. Ellos, just real quick, I don't think that was the case, um, here, you know, but in, in any case, we, we, we have a chief of police, um, that ca- that's newly, new to us here in, in this, in this, um, region. And you can always go and speak to him, I don't know if you, you took that initiative, uh, first. You know, I don't know what your first steps were, um, but in either case, I think our, our police here in, here in Socorro, um, do try to, to be their best and I, and so, I'll leave it there.
Okay.
Thank you.
René Rodríguez?
Aye.
Please, René Valdez Sánchez, to Alcúlar?
Yes.
Victor Pérez?
Aye.
And Eva Colonia Loz.
Aye.
Item number twenty-two, discussion on action on the holiday schedule two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one, and two thousand twenty-two.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Good evening, mayor and council. Uh, the holiday schedule, in two thousand sixteen, we came in to approve the two thousand seventeen, eighteen, and two thousand nineteen. So, we're getting ready to enter another calendar year, so we're just presenting our, our calendar for the next three years. And we're just observing the same holidays that are considered federal holidays.
I, I would, um, exactly. What? At Columbus Day, we need to relook at that.
Okay.
Because it, uh, it's a very contro- it's becoming a very-
Not everyone, not, yes.
A controversial holiday and so, uh, I would suggest that staff look at another one.
Do you want us to remove the holiday?
Well, you know, I'm looking at the calendar and from, we basically have a, a, a day off almost every, every month, just about. And so, I think that if we rem- hmm? Bahambo. And I've never, you know, I've always been supportive of the days off.
Yes.
But in this case, I think it's a little too controversial to have, to observe Columbus Day unless that we call it some, something else or-
Can I offer one thing?
Sure.
So many municipalities, certainly not as many in Texas, but around the country, are certainly that date as a holiday, but they don't call it Columbus Day, they call it Indigenous Peoples' Day.
Uh, yeah, that's where I was going to-
Just saying.
Yeah, and we can rename it, we can rename it that way.
What is it called?
Indigenous Peoples' Day.
Which, which is-
No, no, if, if you do your, if you, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. If you do your, your research on Columbus, we were, we were sold as a society of, of a bill of goods that was no good. He didn't do any, a lot of what he is, and it was all based, if you do your research, it was all based on one man who sold the idea because he had done something, either a book or, I can't remember what it was, and so, that's how that was sold.
I'm, I'm not, I'm, I'm not disagreeing because I've-
Aside from that.
I've read upon that, I really have. There was some stuff that I, I, I was shocked, but-
But his role in, but the, his role, his whole role in discovery is-
He landed in Jamaica.
Minimal.
Well, we know he didn't discover anything because there was people already here. With that said, I feel comfortable with removing it.
Hmm?
I feel comfortable with removing it. I would say just rename it so we can, so it can get the proper, um, recognition.
Yeah, I, I, I have a problem with that.
Look, I'm gonna just say that, okay? Um- So-
Es el mío.
So-
Can we just put dash?
The what?
And then have both?
You know what, I think, I think, I, I think that all of us, because this, this, this is something that I've always said is that we're giving free money away to employees, right?
Oh, you're talking about-
Hold on, hold on, hold on. So just bear with me, okay? I've always had an issue with Giving Friday after Thanksgiving. I've always had an issue before Christmas. I've always had an issue.
Well, I know-
I've said this before and I've said it after.
I know you're an employer, but you know what? People work around the clock.
No, 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 but that's not the point, that's not the point. We're, they're paying, we're paying service that they provide.
No, no, I completely understand, but they need to re-
No, 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 so let me finish. Let me finish first, please, please, let me finish. What I'm saying is, do, okay, I'm gonna just put it out. How much does it cost for us to close that day? You have no clue, do you? No. Do you? No.
I would-
How much?
A lot.
You see, that's what I'm trying to say, is that we really don't know, but if I did the numbers, I could be off. But I know I'm not that off, so that's why I worry about giving a lot of days, because it comes out, you see, we still give them how many? Thirteen days, plus their two weeks on some occasions, maybe three on others, maybe four on others, and then, you know, so, and then we still give medical. You know, I don't know if you guys went to it, but I went to the one to where, at that three-point-five percent cutoff, it's gonna hurt us when it comes to holidays and stuff like that, and medical. So, that's why I'm saying my two cents, because I want you guys to be aware that it's going to come to haunt us.
Okay.
Might not this year, but it's going to. I'm just saying that, I just don't feel comfortable. And I know that I'm going against the grain, because I know. But I wouldn't do my due diligence if I don't speak up and say, this is why, okay? And I know I'm gonna lose. I'll just call it out. I'm just saying it because I've said it, but now I say it more because of what the, what we learned in TML, okay? That's it.
Ms. Ellos?
Okay. I, I completely get it, I understand the funds, I understand the money. What we need to remember is that sometimes we need our people to, to really rest, because sometimes one day is not enough, to really rest. A lot of us, a lot of us either go out of town, so they're asking their employer, they're still gonna leave, you know? That's one, and there's a major problem there, and I, I know that you, there's a major problem there, so-
Yeah, you can use your vacation day to offset that cost.
But sometimes you need to regenerate, you know? It really, it really helps, it really helps, you know, it's the holidays, especially the holidays, you know? It really helps. Um, they, they dedicate, some of, some of our employees, I'm sure dedicate even after they punch out, you know? Um, we have employees that have been here for twenty years, fifteen years, ten years.
And they have three to four or five weeks.
And you don't think they deserve it?
I'm not saying no.
Obviously, they're here because-
I am not saying no.
Right, and obviously, they're, they're, they're still here because they're, they're dedicated employees, you know? And so, that's my two cents worth. I, I, I co-heartedly believe, because I work twenty-four-seven, and I know that I need those seven days off, sometimes three days off out of the year, whatever the case might be.
Mr. Pérez?
All right, having been a supervisor as well, um, I've always worked under the premise that you build an emotional bank account with your employees. What that means is that you give a little and, 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 and it's a give and take. And so, this is a small price to pay to make sure that we have productivity, because they're not automatons, they're not robots, and just the fact that we're enticing, well, you should be happy that they're working, that, that, that's not gonna cut it anymore. Uh, because first of all, we don't pay a whole lot to begin with. Let's call it for what it is. And I think that if we can just invest in their mental well-being for even a day, and they come back refreshed and are able to work, uh, effectively, I think it's worth, it's worth it. So, that's my, my two cents.
And he said it in a nutshell, you know, I, I love the way you said it, thank you so much, because that's exactly my point.
Mr. René?
But I do think we do need to change the name.
I agree with you.
We're not gonna call it Alcúlar Day, okay?
No.
I agree with him.
So if we can, Indigenous Peoples', I mean, let's, if-
Indigenous.
Who made the motion to approve, I, I did, right?
Look, I'll, I'll, I'll do this.
Who made the motion?
Okay. I'm gonna bite my tongue a lot, but I'm gonna say this. I will make the motion to approve the list as is, without changing Columbus Day, period. And just go with the-
You already have a motion.
But I make the motion.
It's his motion.
Or like that?
No, no, I-
Yeah, yeah, with the, with, no, no, yeah, but you didn't change it, okay?
No, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna support Columbus Day. So, I will make-
Oh, my God!
I know, it, there's, no.
Jesus.
You know, and this is another reason why. This town was founded on the migration of the Pito Indians from New Mexico. And for us to call a, a holiday on the, uh, on, on, based on, on a, on a man who savagely killed Indigenous peoples, I think it's a slap in, in their face, and to the community that he was living in our area as well. So then, with that, I'll, I'll rescind, I'll amend my motion to change Columbus Day to Indigenous Peoples' Day, so that we can have and, and keep the rest as is.
Second.
No.
Please, René Valdez Sánchez, to Alcúlar?
Yes.
Victor Pérez?
Aye.
And Eva Colonia Loz.
And I think, I think it's time to correct history, yes.
Item number twenty-four, discussion on action to authorize at-large representative and staff to meet with federal and state agencies, attend board meetings and comment when appropriate during the public comment periods to communicate for pro-business public policy and the regulatory climate supportive of environmental stewardship, transportation plans, business growth, economic viability, and sustainability for all initiatives in Socorro.
Motion to approve her discussion.
Second.
I know it's, I know you're tired, but just a few more words.
So, the, the item before you all is that there's been a lot of movement, whether at the federal or even at the local level here. So, for example, if I may, from a transportation perspective, the local MPO now is developing a regional mobility plan. So essentially, what they're trying to do on this success of two previous plans, they're trying to identify the high priority projects. So, part of this component is that we have met with the MPO, we have submitted our projects to include Díaz Boulevard, to also include the extension of Nuevo Eco Tanks. In addition to that, the, uh, other municipalities, Horizon, Ciudad de Oaxo, Texcota, uh, the county have also submitted these types of projects. There are other bodies at work here as well, so Texcota, for example, is also developing a voter master plan. And so, we met with them initially through the county, however, we as the municipality haven't been approached, uh, to have a, a vote, if you will, in that component of the plan. So essentially, is that, for example, the voter master plan is being managed by the offices of Texcota in Austin, and every month, they provide comments to, uh, the board that governs them, the Texas Transportation Commission. So the idea here is that for us to also visit with those commissioners, visit with the leadership in Austin, or in San Antonio, wherever these bodies are, so that we represent the vision and the initiatives that we have for the city.
Mr. Adriguez?
There's, there's a bunch of issues. I'm gonna bring an item next, next meeting, uh, to address those issues. Um, and, um, and it's very important for us to do this, like, really important. I know that if I say something, it's gonna be off-topic and I know that Jim's gonna say, oh, you can't, you're not a voter for that. So, I don't know, I'm learning, I'm learning.
Only because of top DA.
So, so, um, so, um, trust me when I tell you it's very important. There's things that are coming up that, that, uh, we need to address, so.
Mr. Pérez?
I, I, I agree that, that there should be representation from the city, but I, I would like to include the at-large represent- or other, or other interested, uh, city representatives, so that i- if I could, I mean, if I, if I had the day off, I would love to attend meetings like this. But I know that we need to have representation on the off chance that one day I'll be able to, before I, I'm off, be able to attend, I would love to, so that's just-
You, are you gonna have Indigenous Peoples' Day off? You might go there.
Uh, no, I don't actually.
I don't, I don't think that will sit well in-
So, e- if, anyway, so, uh, I think that if we could just amend the motion to include other interested, uh, council members?
Mr. Adriguez?
I just caution council that in these type of meetings, we need to make sure we don't have a walking forum, because they will be discussing business.
Yeah.
So we have to make sure, and that's why we're all committeeing it, one and maybe another rep, maybe the mayor and another, and representative at large. But if, if all of you wanna go, how would we do that?
No, 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 and, and, and I, I, I see what you're saying, well, the, the rep or, or-
Not to exceed-
Which is what?
Not to, yeah, yeah, something like that.
Okay.
Ms. Ellos?
So, the whole city of Anthony was there, and they were very good about not, um, talking business, and they sat away and they did whatever they had to do, so they wouldn't have a walking forum. That's one. The other, the other thing is, um, in going to these, um, um, courses that we went to, they, I highly recommend that we start, if they, if, if you want things done in your city, you have to put your face in front of the people that can make it happen for you. Sitting back and hoping is not working, and so, you need to be in front, so I just wanted to bring that up.
And just to add to that is that training is okay if you have all, all of councilors?
Mm-hmm.
But here, you will be discussing business that is regarding to the MPO and to other agencies, that's when you can have work, because business will be discussed.
Yeah, that's what we're gonna talk about, that issue. So it's not like we're just gonna go and pick somebody's brain, it's, we're gonna go and talk about stuff like that.
And, and the accusation could be that you're for, that you've already formulated a vote.
Yes.
Uh-
And just like an example is, um, when you're getting a delayed response from Texcota, right? And we need to go to the higher-ups, because the people here are not.
Will happen directly.
That's when we would travel to make sure that we get in front of whoever is managing them, right? And that's just an example, it doesn't mean it's happening, but at that point, you're discussing business. So we have to be a very, very of, of, of forum.
So then, we can still say, um, district, uh, at-large representative when available or other, um-
We should, we should probably put mayor and council when available. Because mayor's the, 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 the head of our city. So if we, if the mayor, I don't know if it takes, if it covers here, but it has more gravity, more weight to it, but, uh, I think it should be, uh, mayor and council not to, um, exceed a forum. And the mayor, can I go? Well, then it'll be mayor pro temp, and then it'll drop down to at-large, who would lead the, the delegation. How's that sound?
Yeah, the one, the one thing, don't, and I'm not, like, I can be a ch- just kind of struggling with the language of the statute. Don't you think one of the violations of the open meeting tactic, the police violation of the meeting tactic, is by intentionally not having a order better, right? By, by erating it so that only enough people attend, so it's not a forum, and suddenly, I mean, ask you one person to leave or not show up. That sounds like it, yeah. My point is, I wouldn't make short of a forum part of the vote, just, I would just use a number, maximum two or three.
Okay. And also, no.
Mr. René?
Also, I think we need to make use of our lobbyists that we have at TML. Um, a lot of these things, I don't know if they're, they go before the state, or, and I understand that, that, um, Texcota, you know, is, it's separate and that, that's with our transportation dollars, but I think also we need to make use of, of our lobbyists too, because they, we have them, and I don't think we're utilizing them. And I spoke to, uh, Ms. Rocha, who's the legislative liaison with TML, and she says, get everything you're gonna get, submit it to them by August, and that way, they can work it also.
Mr.-
But I think what they're talking about are like, like the immediate projects that-
Correct.
So, so if I may, gave a, a, another example is with TCEQ. So, we're now a part of the stewardship with maintaining stormwater. So there's a program that every municipality after it reaches a certain threshold is categorized. So now, we have to go talk to the executive director and the leadership of TCEQ to ensure that what they're passing or the programs that they have, have a benefit to the city. A lot of the programs that we're looking at through the grants coordinator, we, we are not eligible. So the idea is to come in and understand exactly what are they're trying to do, uh, when it relates to those type of programs that they're trying to have forward. So for example, there was a lot of talk about the FEMA maps, so essentially is that those maps have to be certified. If they're not certified, then essentially, the insurance rates go up for the entire community that are affected by those, uh, areas that flood. So that would be conversations that we can have from a technical perspective, because last year, there were many meetings I attended that we were hoping that they would certify, and luckily, they will be certifying the levy, but it's been going on for years.
Mr. Pérez?
And I, I don't, and I don't have a, a problem with Mr. naming Mr. Adriguez or the position of Mr. Adriguez specifically, because, uh, I know I don't, I wouldn't have the time. I, I, and he, it seems to me that he might have more of the flexibility to be able to attend those meetings. Uh, and, and I know that, that, I mean, we've been, um, moving in the same direction because we have the same vision. And I feel confident that he would represent the city, so we, uh, because we, we, we talk about what the vision for the city is, and, and also because of the availability and flexibility that he has with his, with his day. Whereas, I know I don't, I don't know about everybody else, but I know that I, I, I don't.
Okay, so the motion will be Jim? Maximum of three?
I think you could two, I think you could say, imagine to approve with a maximum two, and stop to give us-
Two or three?
I think you would say three.
Because three is not a forum, right?
Yeah, but it's one short, but it makes me more comfortable with three.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
That's what Jim said.
All right.
So it's not, but it were orderly, correct?
Yes, yeah, three is one short of a forum.
Somebody wants that?
And you will get someone who can, like, delegate a little bit more. And if you, two, a maximum two, that is a beautiful. Just that.
Okay, I'll amend my motion then, two. Are we done?
No, good friend.
No public comment?
Public comment.
Okay. Okay, I'll amend, amend my motion.
You amend this motion.
Yeah. Discussion, or I'll amend my motion to authorize at-large and one other council member? And staff to meet with federal, state agencies, attend board meetings and comment when appropriate during the public comment period to communicate for pro-business policy, public policy, and a regulatory climate supportive of environmental stewardship, transportation plans, business growth, economic viability, and sustainability for all initiatives in Socorro.
Second.
Mayor Moros?
Thank you, Ms. Navarro. So I mentioned during public comment that one of my concern was, something about Mr. Pérez just mentioned, was, you know, whoever is speaking, um, to these entities, um, how can we be, make, how can we make sure that they're representing the city as a whole, or the vision as a whole, and not just their own personal, um, minds, um, or ideas? And if you guys are gonna move forward, which it looks like you're going to, um, I would say that in efforts of transparency, would there be a way for you guys to recap whatever is presented at these meetings, um, to the entire city council? So that it's known whatever it was, whatever was said, whatever was proposed, whatever was, um, asked for at these meetings? Is there a way to make sure that that's being recapped at the following meetings of city council? So that we're all aware of what's going on and what's being said on behalf of the city? Thanks.
Mr. Adriguez?
You know, the, i- i- and, and I agree, um, that's why I said earlier that I was gonna bring what was going on with the MPO in the next meeting, because there's some issues. This will, will, will solve some of the issues, because we need to go and tackle them straight on. You know, we, we want funding, we, we understand, we're capped, so there's a lot of, a lot of things that we want to do and want to bring. We understand, because we already know the vision. It's not like my own vision, because you know that we all agree on the vision, we understand what we want the city to move forward. We've already led our constituents what it's all about, and on top of that, I'm not gonna go alone, staff is gonna go with me. So, it's not like I'm just gonna go get my own car room, my own flight or whatever, and I'm just gonna go and say, hey, hi, I'm René, and that's it. It's, it, staff is gonna go, so that staff is a, and, and means to say, hey, this is what we're here for, the representatives that's on the MPO, and whoever wants to go, and then we'll go and say, hey, this is some of the issues. The reason why is because there's some issues that we can address. And, and when I say we, is because you're part of it, you know? And that's how I say, when we have issues in the MPO and we're asking for stuff, or even, even we need to know, hey, is there more funding other than the MPO that you guys could, could allow the smaller municipalities? Stuff like that nature is what we're going to be doing. But it's easier, it's easier, eh, because I'm, I'm, I sit in the board and it's easier of, of to tackle our needs. Staff will be there also with recommendations, and staff will always say, hey, because staff is here for, and to make sure that we don't get out of line and that we're doing stuff to better our city. And like I said, you know, we, we know that Mike has been in the MPO, so who better than to go? Who better than, than, than to remember that sits in the MPO? So those are the issues. It's not, it's just one man's vision, it's the city's vision, and that's what I just wanna address, it's the city's vision.
René Rodríguez?
Aye.
Please, René Valdez Sánchez, to Alcúlar?
Yes.
Victor Pérez?
Aye.
And Eva Colonia Loz?
Yes.
Item number twenty-five, discussion on action on charter amendment sections seven, eight, and nine, pages twenty-eight through thirty-nine for the two thousand twenty election.
Make a motion to approve. No, I'm just kidding. Um, do you, do you guys wanna postpone this one? I'll make a motion to postpone till next meeting.
Second.
Huh? Yeah, it's been a little bit.
Just a little bit.
Yeah.
And, and I have to go too. I, I gotta go.
Second.
I, and then, I don't think, I don't think that, I don't think this meeting can ever end, we don't have an adjournment item.
Can we go to whatever?
There, there's no, there's no motion to, there's no item to sure.
We're gonna make comments.
We can never leave.
Aye.
Please, René Valdez Sánchez, to Alcúlar?
Yes.
Victor Pérez?
Aye.
And Eva Colonia Loz?
Leave it to Mr. Pérez to find everything. Yes.
It's the motion to delete items twenty-six through twenty-eight?
Seconds.
Yeah. Aye.
Please, René Valdez? Sánchez, to Alcúlar?
Yes.
Victor Pérez?
Aye.
And Eva Colonia Loz?
Yes.
A motion to adjourn.
Second.
René Rodríguez?
Aye.
Mister Navares Sánchez, who are for that?
Yes.
Victor Pérez?
Aye.
Any one calling for a loss?
Yes.
Nine twenty-one, meeting adjourned.